Praise the Lord, everyone. This is the day that the Lord has made. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. Let us pray. God, thank you so much for your grace that is ours through Jesus Christ. Realize, Lord God, that we have access to God, peace with God only because of Him. And what He has done for us on the cross. Even the faith we have in Christ, you have given that to us. It is not of works lest any of us should boast. So we ask right now that you continue to strengthen us in our hearts. Strengthen and illuminate in our minds your word. Your word is truth. Sanctify us according to your word. We ask that you bless everyone who has tuned in and who will tune in to hear your word. That we receive encouragement from your word. Help me to teach. Help us all to learn. Be convicted, challenged, and encouraged in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. Today's lesson is coming out of Genesis, chapter number forty-one. Genesis, chapter number forty-one, and this continues in the sojourn of Joseph. Remember, we talked about on last week how in different parts of Genesis, you have certain characters being talked about like Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. And now for a good portion of Genesis, at least the end of Genesis, you have Joseph being portrayed as a wonderful witness for God even in a foreign land. Joseph is faithful to God even in a foreign land, a land where the culture was engrossed in polytheism, the belief of many gods. And yet Joseph wants to stay true to the God of the Hebrews, the true God, Jehovah, Yahweh. Now, it's interesting because our lesson is entitled, "God Rewards Obedience." God rewards obedience. We know that the Hebrew writer tells that God rewards faithfulness. And here we see that obedience is faith in action. We see Joseph literally pointing to God when he could have taken the credit all for himself. And we'll go through all of that. Remember on last week, we looked at how Joseph was placed in a pit by his own brothers. The hatred they had for him. And there was perhaps some level of pride even in his own heart. But the hatred they had for him, they placed him in a pit and end up selling him to slavery. Joseph goes into slavery in Egypt. But there are some individuals that recognize God's hand on him. He's allowed to go and to administer or oversee Potiphar's house. But we also know that Potiphar had a wife who had her own agenda. And she wanted to sleep with Joseph, and Joseph being true to his God did not want to take part in that sin. And he was subsequently framed. Potiphar placed him in prison, so Joseph goes from the pit by his brothers to prison, while in slavery. And yet, we're going to see how he was placed in a position of power. Placed in a position of power. If you look at Genesis, chapter number forty-one, starting at verse number twenty-five, this is where our lesson takes us. In verse number twenty-five, we find that Joseph has a conversation with Pharaoh. If you remember, earlier chapters tells us about Joseph being in prison. And while in prison, he is there with a couple of men. One is a baker or cupbearer, or excuse me, a butler or cupbearer. And the other inmate is a baker. They both have dreams. They discover that Joseph has the ability to interpret their dreams. And he does that basically saying that the cupbearer will be elevated back to his position. Whereas the baker himself will be hung by Pharaoh. He will be killed by Pharaoh. But Joseph tells the cupbearer to remember him. And we know from the reading of the text that two years pass before Pharaoh himself, the king, begins to have a couple of dreams. Meanwhile, Joseph has been in prison. And Pharaoh has these dreams, and we read them in the text in chapter number forty-one. And of course, I'm not going to read all of it for the sake of time. But Pharaoh has two dreams, one right after the other. And these dreams basically deal with seven years of plenty or prosperity, followed by seven years of famine in the land. These dreams that Pharaoh has, he understands that no one in the land can necessarily interpret his dreams. And so these dreams are obviously disturbing to him because of that fact. Now, I want to say that we can't always rely on dreams. Oftentimes, we have a dream and we wonder whether or not that dream is going to come true. These dreams are real for us while we are dreaming them. But you have many of us, even as as believers who will come to think that perhaps the dream will come true because maybe they're sent from above. But some of these dreams, if the truth be told, are perhaps a result of what we ate. Some of these dreams are just reflections of what we desire subconsciously. Some dreams are perhaps even from the devil. So we can't necessarily always determine or say that dreams are God's will. Because we find God's will or determine God's will ultimately from God's word. God's word determines or gives for us what God plans to do, what God desires to do. And so again, we determine God's will ultimately from God's word. But a dream can confirm His word. Or a dream can confirm what God plans to do, again, as it is written in God's word. God can still use dreams if He chooses to do so. All right? But here in the text, we see as Pharaoh is dreaming of seven fat cows, followed by seven lean cows eating up the seven fat cows, or seven large grains of corn, followed by seven lean grains of corn swallowing up the other seven grains of corn. Again, understanding that the dreams Joseph says in verse number twenty-five are one. And we know from the text, in fact, that these disturbing dreams that are given, and watch this, I said, given to Pharaoh, king of Egypt. These dreams are not a result of what he ate. These dreams are not a result of what he subconsciously desired. These dreams are not even a result, or they don't come from, I should say, from evil spirits or from the idol gods that he worshipped in the land. The false deities that he worshipped. Pharaoh does not get his dreams from any of those, but he gets his dreams ultimately from God. Which is to say that God graciously planted His revelation in the dreams of a pagan king. God graciously planted His revelation or His plans in the dreams of a pagan king. That's not the last time He's going to do that. He did that. We read in the Bible in Daniel where God literally gave a pagan king, in the person of Nebuchadnezzar, dreams that will or would outline His plans for the world in the end times. In fact, if you think about it, the dreams that Nebuchadnezzar had in chapter number two and in chapter number four have not ultimately completely been fulfilled. There's still yet a fulfillment for those dreams. And we know God is sure of His word. So these dreams here that Pharaoh has, God Himself gave them to him. But God also was about to use His witness in order to reveal what those dreams were, in order to reveal what His plans were as He planted them in the minds of the king, as He planted them in the dreams of the king. Now, notice again, in verse number twenty-five, what Joseph says, because after Pharaoh has, and forgive me for going back because I'm thinking about it. After Pharaoh has these dreams and he understands that nobody else can interpret them, it is then that the butler remembers Joseph in prison, been in prison for two years. And the butler or the cupbearer finally remembers, as if God has placed Joseph on the heart of the cupbearer. Now, just imagine perhaps how Joseph felt those two long years in prison. And yet, and yet, we go through these circumstances and we're wondering when we're going to come out of our trials, come out the prison of our own terrible circumstances. And this suggests for us that God has His timing for when He will bring us out of the mess we find ourselves in. Joseph is cleaned up. His head is shaven. He's properly dressed. And he is to stand before the king with his gift, with his gift. How many of us know that that our gift will make room for us? Joseph is finally remembered for his gift, what he had to offer as a witness to God. He's remembered for it, and he's brought before the king. Now, whereas he, you would think, would promote himself, be flattered by being in the presence of this king, be full of pride because of his gift that he knows God has given unto him. Joseph, on the other hand, he points to God. He points to God. He does that in chapter number forty-one, verse number sixteen, right? Where the text says, "So Joseph answered Pharaoh, saying, 'It is not in me,'" God will give Pharaoh an answer. Okay? But then also in verse number twenty-five. In verse twenty-five, the text says, "And Joseph said unto Pharaoh, The dream of Pharaoh is one." These, these, these two dreams, they really have one meaning. Okay? Just as Joseph, when he dreamed twice about having rule over his brothers and even his father. Those two dreams have the same meaning, which means they come from God. But then also, those two dreams being one carries a sense of urgency. God is about to do something. Joseph here, he's pointing to God. The text says, "God hath showed Pharaoh what he is about to do." God plants His revelation in the dreams of a pagan king, but He also plants His servant in the path of a pagan king. He plants His servant in the path of a pagan king, and His servant doesn't take credit. He doesn't take credit for his gift. He points to God. Verse twenty-six, he, and twenty-seven, he basically interprets the dream. He says, "The seven good kind or cows are seven years." A lot of sevens here in this passage. We know that the number seven means completion, perfection, maturity. And that's interesting here to suggest to us that this will come to pass. It is true. It is from God. The seven good kind are seven years, and the seven good ears, or ears rather, ears of corn, are seven years. The dream is one. Okay? Verse number twenty-seven, "And the seven thin and eel-favored kind that came up after them are seven years. And the seven empty ears blasted with the east wind shall be seven years of famine." So again, with the dream being one, you have you have a total of fourteen years. Seven years of prosperity, followed by seven years of famine. Seven years of feasting, followed by seven years of famine. Now, notice what Joseph says in verse twenty-eight. "This is the thing which I have spoken unto Pharaoh." And again, he points to God. What God is about to do, he showeth unto Pharaoh. That's how gracious God is that He would plant His revelation or His plans in the dreams of this pagan king to let the king know that there is a true God worth serving and believing in, as opposed to all of these other idol and false gods. Joseph serves as a witness. He serves as a witness. Now, you can notice the tone in Joseph's voice because again, there's a sense of urgency. God is about to do something. He's about to do something in this land. And what I like about it is that here, again, you have this pagan king, but you have this godly servant. They come face to face, meeting together. God is exalted. But what God is going to do is bring everybody together. Everybody together. Not just people who are in Egypt, but the text is going to tell us that the famine actually hits the whole earth so that everybody will experience the famine together, together. Verse twenty-nine, "Behold, there come seven years of great plenty throughout all the land of Egypt. And there shall arise after them seven years of famine. And all the plenty shall be forgotten in the land of Egypt." That's how severe the famine would be. So severe that people would forget how prosperous the land was in the prior seven years. The text says, "The famine shall consume the land." Verse thirty-one, "And the plenty shall not be known in the land by reason of that famine following." Why? For it shall be very grievous. And for that, the dream was doubled unto Pharaoh twice. It is because the thing is established, set, fixed by God, and God will shortly bring it to pass. Now, it's just like a servant of God to give God's revelation even to the heathen. In fact, the heathen ruler, the pagan ruler. Joseph in no way is afraid to talk about God, what God Himself is about to do. We live in a day and age where you have professing Christians who don't want to even mention the name of Jesus because it is not politically correct. We talk about what we should do. We give our own perspectives. We get on CNN and Fox News and MSNBC, and we give our own perspective as to what should be done instead of conveying to the people what God Himself has said in His word, what He has already said in His word. One theologian said, "God has not stuttered. He has spoken on the issues that we face today." And what I like about this text is that you have God placing once again this servant in the path of the king to acknowledge him and what he plans to do. Same way with Daniel. When Nebuchadnezzar dreamed a dream, and he was going to kill everybody in the land of Babylon, or all of the astrologers and the musicians, the wise men, so to speak, who could not tell him the dream, let alone interpret the dream. God blessed Daniel to be in the path of Nebuchadnezzar. And Daniel basically related to Nebuchadnezzar, not his opinion. Not what was done historically, not what should be done based on popular opinion. But Daniel gave Nebuchadnezzar what God wanted him to do. Break off his sins by showing mercy to the poor. Daniel, chapter number four. So God has a way of putting people in the right position at the right time. He did this. This was, this was no coincidence. Or rather, Pharaoh didn't have these dreams for no reason or for not. God gave them these dreams. Now, not only do we see disturbing dreams, but in verses thirty-seven through forty, we see Pharaoh's favor. Pharaoh's favor. Right? Pharaoh's favor. Now, it's interesting because the people or nobody else could interpret the dream, let alone give advice as to what the king should do. What the people of the land even should do. But not only does Joseph interpret the dream, but he also gives advice on how to handle what is about to come. He gives advice as to how to handle what is about to come. If you look at verse number in your Bibles, and I'm reading out of the New King James Version, verse thirty-three says, "Now therefore, let Pharaoh select a discerning or discreet and wise man, and set him over the land of Egypt." Now, after all, he's the one that told Pharaoh what the dream meant. He did not promote himself. He did not say, "I'll take care of this for you." He says, "Let Pharaoh select a discerning and wise man, and set him over the land of Egypt." Verse thirty-four, "Let Pharaoh do this, and let him appoint officers over the land to collect one-fifth of the produce of the land of Egypt in the seven plentiful years, save in the years of prosperity." So that you'll have to give in the land of affliction, or in the time, or the years rather, affliction and famine. Verse thirty-five, "And let them gather all the food of those good years that are coming, and store up grain under the authority of Pharaoh, and let them keep food in the cities. Then that food shall be as a reserve for the land for the seven years of famine, which shall be in the land of Egypt, that the land may not perish during the famine." So you can see God's hand all over Joseph. And not only does Joseph interpret the dreams, but Joseph has wisdom. He has, he has mental skill, if you will, in order to tell Pharaoh, the king, the pagan king, what he must do so that everybody, of course, would benefit. And now, upon seeing God's hand on his servant Joseph, Pharaoh gives favor to Joseph. You know, the text says, "And the thing," verse thirty-seven, "was good in the eyes of Pharaoh." Right? It was good in the eyes of Pharaoh. He saw how good this wisdom was, this advice was. And not only did he see how good the advice was, he obviously saw who gave him the wisdom. Text says, "It was good in the eyes of Pharaoh, but not just him, but in the eyes also of all his servants." Verse thirty-eight, "And Pharaoh said unto his servants, Can we find such a one as this is, a man in whom the Spirit of God is?" Now, that is, that is, I like that because here you have Joseph, who does not promote himself, but he promotes God. He keeps talking to God. He points to God. Pharaoh recognizes that. Now, this is not to say that Pharaoh took his gods off the shelf and began to worship the true and living God of what would be the Hebrews, not necessarily. But he did acknowledge that God was working in the life of Joseph. The text says, "A man in whom the Spirit of God is." He simply acknowledges that Joseph's God gave him this gift, gave him this wisdom. Now again, he acknowledges that because he sees that. And people ought to be able to see God working in our hearts. People ought to be able to see God in our lives, the wisdom that God has shared with us. Because we know or should know what the word says about a given issue. And when we speak, we don't speak out of both sides of our mouths. We don't speak from our own opinions, but we speak what God has said. So people ought to be able to recognize that. They ought to be able to see that. Because again, after all, we are witnesses unto Christ. We are witnesses unto Christ. Joseph is literally being a witness. Now, he has favor in the eyes of the king. The king can see the hand of God on his life. He does not compromise, right? His faith. He's in a foreign land where they worship many gods. And yet, he does not compromise his own faith. And even though, or let me say it like this, because he does not- And even though, or let me say it like this, because he does not compromise his own faith, he is elevated. He is elevated. Now ultimately, God is the one that, that sets up one and puts down another. But, but notice, notice, Pharaoh, Pharaoh, um, he elevates him to a position of power. Okay? Text says in verse thirty-nine, "And Pharaoh said unto Joseph, 'Forasmuch as God hath shew'd thee all this, there is none so discreet, discerning, and wise as thou art.'" Verse forty, "Thou shalt be over my house, and according unto thy word shall all my people be ruled." Think about this for a second. He goes from being in a pit to prison, to now a position of power in a palace. Right? Or we could say, a palace. From the pit to the prison, to a position of power in a foreign land. In a foreign land. Now, we are um, we are citizens of heaven. Paul talks about in Ephesians, uh, chapter number two, as well as in Philippians. Our citizenship is in heaven. So spiritually, we are citizens of heaven. We're also citizens, of course, down here. And God has a way of salting the earth with his, with his servants. There ought to be people in the government who are Christians, who can influence um, the minds and the hearts of, of people who are rulers in our land. Now, we, we can't change anybody, but we can influence. In fact, we can't even change our own selves. The word of God changes us or transforms us. But we can sure enough influence people. We can influence the heart and the hand of the king. And we see that, we see that even here. And thankfully, uh, by God's grace, the favor that is in the eyes of Pharaoh for Joseph, Pharaoh elevates him and makes him second in command. Second in command. Now, he's second in command after being forgotten in prison just twenty-four, twenty-four hours earlier. Just twenty-four hours earlier, he was in prison, forgotten. All of a sudden, the butler remembers him. He's cleaned up. He goes to Pharaoh. He interprets the dreams. Now he is made second, second in command. God can do it. God can do it. The text says, "Only in the throne will I be greater than thou." So he's sort of like prime minister, if you will, in, in Egypt. Now, that's the fit, that's the favor that uh, that, that God uh, gave to Joseph through the person of the king. Now, lastly, not only do we see these disturbing dreams, and we see as a result of, of the gift of Joseph, we see Pharaoh's favor. But then lastly, we see foreign families, foreign families, or how Joseph would establish his roots with the Egyptians. He's elevated by king and um, you can see and read in the text, in verses uh, forty-one on down to fifty, where you have uh, those dreams coming true. You have seven years of prosperity, or seven years of plenty and feasting, followed closely by seven years of famine. But because of the wisdom of Joseph and Pharaoh listening to Joseph, Egypt has enough to feed not just their own, but people outside of the nation. Now, if you read in verse number forty-seven, let me just read that right quick. The text says, "Now in seven, or rather, now in the seven plentiful years, the ground wrought forth abundantly. So he gathered up all the food of the seven years, which were in the land of Egypt, and laid up the food in the cities. He laid up in every city the food of the fields, which surrounded them. Joseph gathered very much grain as the sand of the sea, until he stopped counting, for it was immeasurable." Again, to say something about the prosperity in those seven years. But notice, in verse number fifty to fifty-two, we have um, we have Joseph uh, not just being blessed with a signet ring, which, which uh, underscores his authority in the land as second in command. Not just being blessed, blessed with um, with a gold chain, but he's blessed with a wife. He's blessed with a wife. Um, and of course, we know that the wife was the daughter of a man, uh, Potiphar, who himself was a pagan and worshipped pagan gods. So the daughter obviously was swayed that way, influenced that way. However, that did not stop Joseph himself from worshiping his true God. And we know elsewhere, such as uh, the king Solomon. When Solomon married not just one, not just two, but several hundred women, and all of those women, um, if you will, were non-Hemerals who worshiped idol gods. They turned his heart away from the Lord. Um, away from being committed to the Lord, I should say. But here, God allows Joseph to marry one. She is outside of his race, but more importantly, um, she is the daughter of, of a pagan. The text says in verse fifty, however, "And to Joseph were born two sons before the years of famine came." Now, don't miss that. Don't miss that. The text says, "And unto Joseph were born two sons before the years of the famine." That's interesting because here we have Joseph um, still going about his business of ruling as second in command, but bearing children, knowing good and well what is to come. Knowing good and well, the famine is to come, which is to say, Joseph still has faith in God and trust in God, that even though there's going to be seven years of famine, grievous years, so much so that you forget the prosperous years. He still has faith that God will take care of him, the land, and his family. He's able to bear children, and those children, of course, will um, will uh, end up being part of the tribes of Israel. Now, um, that's um, that's interesting. Before the years of famine came, he gets married, he bears children, and he gives them names to to convey uh, his own circumstances, or what he feels in his heart. If you look at the text, the text says, right quick, uh, in verse number fifty-one, "And Joseph called the name of the firstborn Manasseh." Manasseh, having to do with forgetting. The text says, "For God said, 'He hath made me forget all my toil,'" right, "and all my father's house." God has a way of, of causing us uh, to forget our suffering because of the blessing by which he blesses us with. You know, us being fruitful. That's why he names the second child Ephraim, which has to do with being doubly fruitful. Okay? Verse fifty-two, "And the name of the second called he Ephraim." Now again, he, he gives his sons names that, that convey his circumstances, or how he feels in his heart. You find that all throughout, all throughout the Bible. Names mean something, right? Not Bam Bam and Boo Boo, but uh, here in the text, uh, Manasseh, meaning to forget, right? And Ephraim, meaning to be doubly fruitful, right? He was doubly fruitful by way of having two sons, but God blesses him with those children, even knowing what is to come. Right? So he's able to forget, in a sense, forgive what has happened unto him. God has a way of doing that. And um, and he has a way of doing that by blessing our circumstances. "God hath caused me to be faithful in the land of my affliction." Now, um, we must remember that uh, that no matter what our circumstances are, our Lord does not change. He does not change. Now, we know that Joseph went through some terrible circumstances, hated by his brothers, sold into slavery, um, placed in prison. But what you're going to find is that while in slavery and in prison, the Bible says that the Lord was with Joseph. The Lord was with Joseph. And um, had a plan for Joseph. And if the Lord was with Joseph, even in the pit, even in slavery, even in prison, and then, of course, showed it so by abundantly, um, blessing him at the latter end of his life, then we know that um, that our Lord is with us. He's with us. Jesus says, "Lo, I'm with you always, even unto the end of the world." But of course, our Lord wants us to be faithful in um, in obeying his, obeying his word. We see Joseph was faithful, and God rewarded his faithfulness. God rewarded his obedience. Now, right quick, let me just say that, uh, again, with everything that's going on, remember, God is with his people. All of us are in this thing together with the, with the injustices of the land, even with the pandemic. Um, we could sit or stand and say that these injustices are, or these uh, these calamities, this affliction, this national affliction, um, can be said that it is a result of rebellion against God. But God has a way of orchestrating things so that all of us are in this thing together. All of us are in this thing together. Egypt, um, all of Egypt was in their famine together. In fact, all of the world was in their famine together. Yet God used his servant uh, to orchestrate in such a way, or to administer in such a way, that the world was blessed um, because of him, or would be blessed because of him. Potiphar's house was blessed because of Pharaoh. Egypt was blessed because of, or rather, excuse me, Potiphar's house was blessed because of Joseph. Let me say that. Potiphar's house was blessed because of Joseph. And all of Egypt, of course, was blessed because of Joseph. Let it be said of us, that people, our neighborhoods, our homes, schools, wherever we find ourselves, our jobs, people there are blessed because of us, God's people, how he plants us in uh, certain places, amongst certain people. Amen. God bless you. God keep you. May heaven smile upon you.